Oh, got it. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:00. Meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, May 15, 2003. And let's see if I can have Oscar lead us in the pledge, please. The council did meet in closed session. And in essence, what we did, we gave direction to approve litigation or the initiation of litigation in one case pertaining to a sign. As you can see, we're just a little shorthanded today, but we'll work our way through it all. Anyone wishing to address the council, if they do, these little yellow tickets and things sure do help. We have a lot of public hearings tonight, so we'll open it up to public hearings and people have an opportunity to speak. First agenda item is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the city council. Sherry Castorina? Or Cheryl? Yes.
Good evening, William Kristof and esteemed city council members. My name is Cheryl Castorina, and I am the president of the League of United Latin American Citizens, LULAC. It's for Yolo County Progressive Council, number 3204. Please note that there is another LULAC council in West Sacramento. We encompass all of Yolo County, however, our base is in Broderick and Bright. We are entering into our third year as a chartered council with LULAC. Last year, we stood before you along with West Sacramento youth to notify the city council that LULAC was cosponsoring a youth boxing camp in July of 2012. We were cosponsors along with the City of West Sacramento Parks and Recreation and Broderick and Bright Main Event Coalition. We are happy to report that 51 youth attended the boxing camp. And LULAC was able to grant full scholarships, $45 to 20 of these youth, and partial scholarships of $22.50 to three. This year, our council plans to be involved in more projects to assist our young people. Among the goals we have planned for the community are establishment of a LULAC Young Adult Council and a LULAC Youth Council for boys and girls, having fundraisers to provide college scholarships for graduating high school seniors at both River City High School and Yolo High School, working with the Coalition of Concerned Legal Professionals to provide Know the Law sessions to inform citizens of West Sacramento of their legal rights, advocate for our community to help with development of services for all citizens in our area, assist disabled veterans with grants to send their children to camp. School boards, we are concerned with our children's education issues that affect their future success.
Let me just interrupt. If you take that thing and if you lay it down, the people would be able to see it. By standing up on that, you can't turn it around over towards you. Yeah. There you go. And then people at home can see it.
Oh, okay. And monitor recreational opportunities and employment opportunities for our youth. We plan to come back to the city council throughout the year to inform you of the progress of our activities.
Good.
So we just wanted to come and say hi and say we're still here.
Thank you.
I hope we have a good relationship.
I hope we do, too.
And just before you step away, I wanted to say thank you very much for the work that you did. I did happen to have an opportunity to go out that evening as part of the camp, and the kids were having a great time. I know you partnered with the city staff. They did a wonderful job of supporting it at the rec center. But the kids and the volunteers, the boxers that you brought back to provide sort of that guidance and that training and sort of that feel-good feeling that the kids experienced was wonderful. So thank you for making that happen.
Enjoyed it as much.
And even the kids, everybody was welcome to come.
Oh, yeah.
Kids in wheelchairs.
Yeah.
Everybody got something.
Good. Very good. Thank you. Taylor Gudermut. How do you pronounce that?
Gudermut.
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 Thank you.
Good evening, council members, staff. Could you turn that off for a moment? I need to cue you. All right. All right. I have an ask and an invite for you. I know you've had both before, and usually at these meetings, there is an ask. I'm going to ask you to imagine. My name's Taylor Gudermut, and I'm an artist. And with my friend and fellow artist, Paula Wenzel Belacera, we ask you to imagine. All right? You ready? And all of you? Two. You walk out the front door of this building. You cross over to the center divide. You look down at the ground between the two ballplayers. You see a 12-foot-by-12-foot artwork built by the two of us artists out of smaller artworks made by 125 community members from two and a half years old through those in their senior years. You see weavings, mosaics. You see weavings, mosaics, and drawings, most of which are made from semi-permanent materials donated by 16 local farmers and agribusinesses. These were created by 150 community members at six different workshops. And you see a solar-powered sculpture in the center that turns slowly and represents the eight phases of the moon by which farmers used to do their planting and harvesting. So, no more imagining. That's what you'll see at the opening of the farmer's market on June 6, from 4:30 until dusk. So we've been working on this project since February. We call it Grow Yolo. And it was at that time that we applied for a grant and received it from the Yolo County Arts Council. The funding came from the James Irvine Foundation. And the goal of their grant is to bring together the farming community, the art community, and the community at large. And so that's what we've done through this project. The charge of the grant was to involve everyone, making this semi-permanent, what is called a mandala, out of the natural materials. A mandala is a visual symbol of the universe that represents unity and harmony. So we hope we're doing that in the piece, and we hope that you come and see it and celebrate with the community. Again, it's on June 6, between 4:30 and dusk during the opening of the great new farmer's market right out here. And it'll remain there on the site for a few weeks until it gradually changes over time, as all things do. And it's just been a delight meeting all the farmers and everyone who donated materials for the piece and worked on it. So, thank you.
Sounds good. Look forward to it.[564.16][564.16](applause). Bill Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Potem. Willing Lowell, West Sacramento, for the record. Earlier this week, I was in Woodland, just north of Employment and Community Development there on Cottonwood. And just on that second block on the opposite the county building was a couple of pretty good-sized apartment buildings. It looked like they're remodeling a couple of the stairways into a couple of wheelchair ramps, therefore making it a lot easier for many people to get up and down the upstairs apartments, for sure. And I think we might take that as an example to make more of our places wheelchair accessible. And I was also thinking about, I keep thinking about it. Every now and then, we applied at Secog for grant monies to finance different projects. So maybe we could do that to finance the improvement of our speaker system here and for extension speakers on our buses, because too often, the driver's trying to tell everybody something, but the air conditioner or the heater is making too much noise. And of course, the buses aren't exactly real quiet, anyway. So I think it'd be a good idea to think about having extension speakers towards the middle and towards the rear of the buses of the future and maybe some way modify the existing buses. And I also think we can improve things, get them to where they, at least, they would be as good as they used to be when it comes to public restrooms, because it seems to me like we keep modifying certain restroom situations that result in fewer restrooms for greater access for a select few. And it seems to me like that causes the existing businesses, when they have fewer restrooms than originally planned, it doesn't seem to me like they would be operating according to code unless the code changes to call for fewer restrooms. And finally, one of my fellow riders complains about having to go across the river to get adequate choices for her pets. So she said to get her pet food, she has to go across the river. So maybe some of our merchants can offer a wider variety of pet food so that more folks would want to shop here in West Sacramento. And I thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Council communications. Any communications, assignments, meetings, anything? Council appointments and reappointments, none of those today. So we'll move on into consent. Or no, I take it back. We'll move into City Manager Economic Development, presentation on the update of the West Sacramento Farmer's Market.
Ernesto Lucero with the Economic Development Division. This presentation will be given by Denise Seals with the West Sacramento Chamber on the update of the farmer's market, and I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Good evening, council members. And thank you, Taylor, for the great segue, because indeed, things do change. Everything does change. And with the cooperation, collaboration, and terrific commitment from Yolo Transportation, city staff from the city manager's office, West SacPD, Public Works, Economic Development, Parks, a steering committee made up of local restaurateurs, city staff, once again, chamber staff, farmers, business leaders, all, most of us residents and all of us committed foodies. We are not only moving the farmer's market, but we're establishing a standard for farmer's markets in the region. This market will, working under the theme of it starts with the right ingredients and recognizing as a group that it seems that farmer's markets are starting to feel like homogenous malls. You can go into any farmer's market almost in any paved asphalt parking lot, close your eyes, and you know that if you're a fan of farmer's markets, you can expect X number of farmers, X number of candy popcorn distributors, and you can almost close your eyes and lay it out. So we're turning that on its ear. We have, this year, we have 25 local farmers committed at this point, the majority of which have farms under three years or less of age. So they're young entrepreneur farmers. And the majority of them in Yolo County committed. We, instead of carnival-type food, we have, we'll be doing rotating food trucks and local restaurants. We have dig-in-at-the-market the first Thursday of every month, sit-down dinner for 100 people on white linen tablecloths in front of city hall here, as we celebrate the city core, the city center, the great work that's been accomplished in this community in the last 25 years. Good Living at the Market, the second Thursday is demos, fitness demos, master gardeners, composting, recycling, all the things to celebrate about being here in West Sac. Farm-to-fast-food, the third Thursday is show peeling off of your leadership with the mayor's Bloomberg Challenge, aspiring restaurant, screened and aspiring restaurateurs that have developed a basic business plan and have some skill, demonstrated skill, will be mentored in both business and food prep by local restaurateurs using the Wicked Witch Food Truck. And that'll vary every month. They'll make all the profit and bear all the expense and kind of a little incubator for restaurants right on West Sac. And a commitment from a coalition of local restaurants, independently owned, many of which are near and dear to all of our hearts, that at the end of every market, they will come in, purchase from the farmer's produce that may be left after the markets close, and feature those in their menus for the weekend as a West Sac Farmer Market, Farmer's Market special. So that's pretty exciting, all over town. Brand-new market. We're not just moving it, it's a new day. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Not many questions, but just a comment. Thank you very much. I know you've been here, you've been with us trying to make this thing happen, and you've tried to figure out how to morph it into something successful. And every, I think every year, we've learned and experienced something a little bit different. But it sounds like you've got a pretty exciting plan in place for laying it out. And I think the key's going to be to make sure that people know what we're doing. And so I just want to make sure that we're helping to market and make sure that folks are aware, because I think if people knew just how good this can be, you're going to get good crowds. So I just want to make sure that we're helping to support it and market it in any way possible.
Thank you.
So thanks for all your work and all the support that you've gotten.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, too, would chime in and just say, thanks a lot. You know, the chamber, you guys have really stepped up in trying to get a real farmer's market started here. And it's not easy. It's difficult. But at the same time, we do have a lot of farmers in the region, and it's, this sounds like it really has a good shot, a good chance of working. Good. Mark?
Yeah, I think the other thing this does is kind of pulls together a lot of the elements we're trying to do in terms of creating a more healthy environment in the city and creating more recognition of not only what you're eating, but where it's being grown. And we'll see in just a short couple of minutes, some of the folks here that are doing neighborhood gardening.
Right.
And so what this does is really ties it all the way from the neighborhoods to more of a city perspective into the restaurants, which couples into the whole farm-to-fork movement in this region. So I really commend you for really pursuing this and coming up with new and fresh ideas. I think they're going to really work out well, and looking forward to attending.
It's, I, thank you all so much. And your support has been key to the ability to move this forward. We knew from the get-go that it was going to be at least a three-year process, and this is the third year. We will continue to accept EBT, WIC, farmer's markets coupons to make this available to every member of this community. So it's exciting. We hope to see you all there. And once again, thanks so much to city staff and the team that they pulled together from the city manager's office through all the department heads to make this possible. So, thank you.[1152.41][1152.41](applause).
People out, yeah. People out there in TV land, they should remember, this is June 6. That's when it starts. Thank you. Okay. Consent agenda. Agenda item number three was pulled, so we have, in essence, four and five. Pull five? Okay. Yeah, that's a good idea. So consent agenda item number three. Looking for a motion, comment? Number four? I'll move it? Been moved and seconded? Are there any opposed? Hearing none? That is so ordered. Okay. Agenda item number five. We're going to have a little communication on this, and I've got a slip on this. This is consideration of a license agreement with the Friends of the Main Drain Parkway for Community Garden. Nesto.
I'm available to answer any questions about the agreement, but we do have a speaker from the Main Drain, Friends of the Main Drain.
Okay. Do you want to give a brief report about what this agreement entails?
Sure. It's basically a community garden with a nonprofit group. The name is Friends of the Main Drain Parkway. And they will be utilizing a piece of city property along the main drain and for purposes of a community garden. So this license agreement formalizes that and puts forth provisions to ensure that the garden's successful.
Any questions, Ernesto? Okay. We do have people, a person wants to speak on this. Chip Wallace.
Thank you very much. My name's Chip Wallace, and I am the president of Friends of the Main Drain Parkway. And I just wanted to take a little time to thank the city manager's office and Ernesto for helping us with this license agreement. We started back in 2007 when one of my neighbors asked a backhoe operator to cut a piece of land and planted a few trees and a few flowers, and it's just blossomed from there. We eventually became a nonprofit with the hopes of getting grants. The city's been very supportive, but they also wanted us to keep it low-key since it was, we're informally using their land. So when the new city manager was hired, we invited him out because we wanted to do something a little more permanent. So he came out, and Ernesto worked on a licensing agreement. So that's been very beneficial to us. But I also wanted to thank Dina Kurtley and Chris Sarawaski. They've been very helpful with the minimal resources that they've had. Dina was able to get us 300 trees and a bike path through a mitigation project, so that was very helpful. And she gave us access to water, which really helped us take off. But the community garden has been what's really helped us grow. We have about 300 people on our mailing list. We're feeding a lot of people that we didn't expect that we were going to feed. We thought we were just going to have some extra vegetables, but it's really turned into a way to feed the neighbors. And that's kind of why we're here. We're hoping that you approve this lease and that we'll be able to go out and get more grants. We'll be able to publicize ourselves more. We'll be able to get in the paper and hopefully be a model for other community gardens in the, in the city. And I also wanted to thank my board, who worked tirelessly out there in the garden, and especially Councilman Johansson, who's been with us since, geez, almost day one, helping us with our agreements, helping us with our nonprofit status, just being a city liaison. So that's been very appreciated, too. That's all.
All right, good. Any council members have any questions or comments? I know you have a comment.
Yeah, I think you probably can sit down, Chip. Yeah, this is, this is really, I think, shows an example of how the community can come together to make their neighborhoods better. And it's, it's good on so many different levels. It not only shows relationship buildings in communities, getting to know your neighbors, but it goes far and beyond, you know, just mowing the neighborhood's neighbor's strip of grass, just to kind of keep the whole neighborhood orderly. You know, this, in particular, this group, they have neighborhood events during Halloween and Christmas, and it's just a really ever-expanding group of people in this general area. And doing, in the past, we were doing what a lot of other people do, is they, there's property next to you, so you use it, improve it, make it look nice. And I know we're having people on the levees that are planting flowers and mowing it and just making it nice in general. It's not their property, but, but they're doing it, and it makes it better for all of us. So what this lease does is actually legitimizes that practice to allow people to use this for gardening, and again, it's production of fruits and vegetables, that they're actually exchanging among themselves. And I think people from outside even come in and do this. And they have teaching, guarding, teaching classes. It's a wonderful, wonderful group. And my hope would be that, you know, they did everything right in terms of setting up a nonprofit and actually looking how to make this, what they're doing, sustainable over the long term. But my hope would be to use this lease, this type of lease arrangement as an example that can be replicated in other parts of the city as well. So it's just not this group, but it's, it's how you can do this type of community-building exercise within your own group, and not only to build your community, but also to, again, emphasize fruits and vegetables and just the whole farming concept of where we are in West Sacramento. So I, you know, I really commend all of you for sticking with it. It's always hard in a nonprofit. There's always, you know, motivations that you have to have to keep going, but you've definitely done a great job out there, and hopefully we can see this replicated in other parts of the city as well. But thank you.
No matter.
It's been said. Thank you. Yeah. Totally agree. It looks wonderful. If you haven't seen it, for those who haven't, you've got to take a look at it. It's a pretty amazing operation out there. And so I think you've said it well. Thanks, Mark.
No, it is. It's really, it's really an asset to the community. It truly is. And, you know, it's not only just the planting of flowers and fruits and trees and things, but I mean, you, as a main drain organization, you really get involved in the community. I mean, I know that I help with the All Charity Raffle, and I know that you guys help with the All Charity Raffle. It's a fundraising opportunity for you. But at the same time, it's something that I think really works, and I think what really works is, is the effort that you put forth for all of the parts of your community that you touch. And it's, it's really, really a very nice thing. And I thank you for that. Thank you very much for that. Agenda item number...
Should I move that item?
Oh, do we have to move an item? Yeah, we do. Okay. Looking for a motion?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Are there any opposed? Hearing none? That is so ordered.[1690.83][1690.83](applause). We should be applauding you. This is a, let's see. This is a public hearing to consider adoption of Resolution 13-27 confirming the diagram and assessment and ordering improvements, maintenance to be made for the landscape and lighting district number one. Paul?
Yeah, as we do every year around this time, we come to you to start to have you approve our assessments so that we can put them on the tax roll for the next tax year. So the assessments get, get put on property owners' tax bills in order to fund benefits. And this item deals with the landscaping and lighting district number one, which covers areas mostly in the north part of the city. The benefit zones that are outlined in your report vary by land use, and so the way that the, the cost is allocated to that parcel varies. And so what can you say about this? These assessments don't change. They're the same every year. And so the budget is approximately $819,000. And it will cover, you know, the budget for maintaining these districts. There are, one thing I don't, in the report under the budget section, you know, these districts do have a shortfall that has to be covered by the general fund. So we do, you know, because of Prop 218, you know, the difficulty in increasing the assessments in these districts and having it fixed just means that as costs go up and our revenue stays... up and our revenues stay the same, that we've got to cover that shortfall. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so I am going to open the public hearing and is there anyone who wishes to speak on this agenda item? I'll turn to my fellow council members and look to-
Move the item?
Comment? I'll move the item? Hmm? Yeah, I will. And, okay, I'll close the public hearing and the item's been moved by, uh, Oscar Viegas and seconded by Mark. Are there any opposed? Hearing none? That is so ordered. Okay, agenda item number seven. This is a public hearing also to consider adoption of the resolution 13 dash 28 confirming the diagram and assessment and ordering improvements for the storm drain maintenance district number one. Ray, oh, hello, Paul?
Yeah, we, you know, we, we have three storm drain maintenance, uh, areas in the city. This one is unique because it, it's just in, in the area, uh, around Rayleigh's Landing and was established to, to fund improvements that were constructed in 1989. And so the, um, the assessment that you, uh, you see in front of you within the, the diagram will fund those, those drainage improvements, um, and, um, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this is also a public hearing, so I am going to open the public hearing and I do have one, uh, person to speak, Bill Lowell.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. William Lowell of West Sacramento for the record again, and I know you've heard me mention this several times before, but over there where I live on Pennsylvania and 1500 block, uh, there's no storm drain nearby and I think we ought to consider assessing the areas that don't have the, uh, nearby storm drain and, and, uh, start, start providing them and even if they, it does involve a little extra investment, but I think it would be well worth it. And, uh, again, when rain's real heavy, that means if I want to catch the bus on 15th Street across from the fire station, that means I have to walk the middle of the street in order to, uh, get to that bus stop across from the fire station. And, and while I'm at it, the bus drivers have told me several times that we need a new, uh, section of, uh, cement there between the sidewalk and the curb where, uh, the bus 39 lets us off when we're coming from downtown like they did on, uh, Court Street in Woodland, uh, because when, during the rainy seasons, it's kind of muddy where they let us off and, and it's a little frustrating and it'd be nice, again, if we had a section of cement where we could land on a dry spot. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, this is a public hearing, so is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and I'll turn the, the council to- It's been moved and seconded. Are there any opposed? Hearing none? So ordered. Agenda item number eight is hearing to consider closeout of CDBG grant 10 ED 0, 03, uh, 0C dash 7352. Louise?
Um, in 2011, the city was awarded a grant from the State of California Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG. Uh, the grant was to provide infrastructure in support of the development of a metals recycling facility at the Port of West Sacramento. There were a number of special conditions in the grant agreement that the business that was developing the facility had to comply with within certain miles, uh, dates and milestones, um, and they were not able to meet those milestones. Staff recently received a request to disencumber, the, ask for disencumbrance of the grant so that the funds would be returned to HCD since we were not able to comply with all the requirements of the grant agreement. And this will allow the city to retain an unblemished grant, uh, history with HCD over this grant. That's my entire presentation. I am available for que- questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this agenda item? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and I'll turn to the council members for comments or for action.
Just a question, uh, city manager, so with these kinds of grants, maybe Louise might know, so, uh, the unblemished record, is that, is that true in terms of returning funds? Because I know there's, that these funds are time limited, I mean, they've got to get liquidated within a certain period of time and we've had them for a while and now we're going to return them, so, so what, I mean, do we, are we put in an awkward position the next go-round, trying to reapply or what, what happens now?
When we're, when we apply for a competitive grant, like when we're going for money for our first-time homebuyer program or, uh, the grant application that we recently submitted for infrastructure for a housing project, um, you're hurt if you can't fulfill the requirements in those grants, but this is an over-the-counter, not a competitive application, and the over-the-counter program looks at it differently.
That's right.
So we will not be hurt in future rounds. Um, we've complied with HCD's request and they've indicated that, uh, this, there will be no blemish on the city's record.
I would just add that we didn't actually receive any funds, so there's none to return because the special conditions were never met. There was no funds released.
Got it, got it. Any other questions? Looking for a motion? Second. Been moved and seconded. Are there any opposed? Hearing none? So ordered. Agenda item number nine. This is also a public hearing to consider objections to the proposed removal of weeds. Hey, Brian?
Evening, council members. Brian Johnson from Fire. Move this mic so you don't hear my heart thumping here. Uh, I think you covered appropriately. I'm here for, answer any questions, consideration of the objections anybody may have today.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so I am going to open the public hearing. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and I'll turn to my fellow council members for comments or a motion.
Move the item.
Been moved and seconded. Are there any opposed? Hearing none? That is so ordered. Okay, this is, I believe, a time set and we are past the 7:30 deadline. How about that? Uh, this is consideration of city council resolution 1332 authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond issuance agreement and an ESCRO agreement authorizing the issuance of special tax refunding bonds, approving certain and other actions related thereto. Paul?
Yeah, um, we're, we're really pleased with, uh, the action we're bringing before you tonight because, uh, we've been looking at refunding these CFD 12 bonds for some time. Um, yeah, I just wanted to point out the hard work of, of our underwriter, Piper Jaffrey, who really went out and, and beat the bushes on this one to find some investors who would, uh, take a, a private placement of these bonds. And so this, this, uh, private placement will be with, uh, Alliance Bank, um, and so in your report, we've got, we've got the terms of, of that deal and, uh, you know, just, uh, some of the highlights I point out is that, you know, we're going to have net present value savings of, of over, uh, 10 and a half percent on this, so those are very good savings, well in excess of the, the 5% savings that we normally look for. Um, another, another benefit of this deal is that we are going to shave a year off of the, uh, the debt service schedule, so we're going to use, uh, because we don't need a debt service reserve in this refunding deal.
I do. These are different. You like these.
Lop an year off of it, so, um, you know, in terms of, of, of the benefits, it, uh, the benefits are going to, uh, in reducement of the assessment because of the unique, uh, deal that, that, that we have on, under the local baseball agreement with the baseball operators, um, you know, part of this benefit will accrue to, um, to baseball, uh, and, and they're basically going to be paying no more, uh, of, of, no portion of the assessment for CFD 12 debt service. And then the city will also benefit because to the extent that we reduce that debt service, um, half of that savings will go back to the city as a taxing entity, uh, distribution. So, um, benefits, uh, all around here on this deal, um, will be, uh, with your authorization received, we'd be closing the deal, uh, June 11th and, um, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, um, I do have a question. Sac County been, um, contacted? Okay, good.
Yeah, we, uh, we, we, we keep them in, in touch with, with, uh, everything that we're doing here, um, and so, yes, they've, they've been contacted.
I don't have any slips to speak on this. All us council members that have any questions or comments? I would just say that, uh, Phil, with your, your team, and we've had a number of these now and it's not extending the, the length of the terms or anything, it's just a, uh, an overall, uh, reduction because of interest rates and different things that have become favorable for us and Paul and, and Natish and you, I, I, I just wanted to thank you for, you know, saving a few pennies for everybody here and there and, and, uh, I think that people will look very favorably on that. Thank you. Uh, okay, looking for a motion?
Move the item.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any opposition? Hearing none? Well, oh, it's not a public hearing. Correct. The item is approved. Okay, we are now to council calendar.
Uh, yes. I just wanted, um, not on the calendar, but, um-
Can't hear.
Thank you. Is our tour with, um, Senator Steinberg, um, that will begin promptly at 10:30 and you have a, a memo with the tour route and some other information, um, attached, uh, for you. And this is, um, and then tomorrow night is our annual state of the city address, uh, which will begin at 5, um, 5:00 PM here in the, in the Galleria. And this will be our last meeting, um, of the month. Returning on June 5th.
City manager report.
Uh, just briefly, uh, Senator Boxer's bill, the word of bill, flood, uh, protection measure was approved by the senate today. We're going to get an analysis of that. The amendments that were made were all favorable from, from our city's perspective and we'll have that in the council's newsletter on Friday. And as we reported to the port commission, we'll come back at the June 5th city council meeting with an update, uh, on the, uh, Senator, Congressman Garmendy's water plan, uh, proposed for California, we'll have an analysis of that, raise the issues of concerns both to the port and to the city of that proposal and other Delta issues, uh, will be included in that analysis.
Okay. City attorney report? Nothing to report? Staff direction from council members? Anything to report? Any agenda item requests by council members?
Nope.
Looking for a motion?
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. That is so ordered. We are adjourned.